Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and Governor Healy's March twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-three revised order extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting of the Great Barrington Affordable Housing Trust will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for out participation by members of the public and or parties with a right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at townofgb.org. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner. By attending this webinar. Is there a motion to approve the December minutes?
I move to approve the December minutes.
Definitely. Is there a are you make modifications?
Yep, um, so second and then discussion, Joe.
Oh, yeah, yes. Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah.
Um, discussion?
Uh, they just missed, they misspelled Jeremy's name.
Great. It should be H I G A.
And this is his first name?
His last name.
Now, at the top, it's spelled the G. Is that?
Oh, he's got a little J, doesn't he?
Yeah. It's so at the very top, it says J E R.
Great. Um. Yes, Eileen.
That's a good catch.
It's J E R E M Y.
Then it, and then it's H I G A, not H E.
Right.
Thank you. Um. It's, it sounds like there is an agreement to accept the correction. All those in favor of approving the minutes with the correct spelling of Jeremy's name. Roll call vote Bill Cook.
Yes.
Garfield Reed.
Yes.
Joe Method.
Uh, yes.
And Peter Most.
Yes.
And I also say yes. Um. I understand that we do not have minutes for the February meeting. Um. I may rely on you all to fill me in on things as we go through this because I was not able to read what happened in the February meeting.
Yeah, I wasn't even there.
Yeah.
We talked about you mostly.
What's that?
We talked about you mostly, so it's gonna be a little awkward.
Well, I will look forward to reading those minutes. Um. Trust-related activities. Um, does anybody have anything about the Berkshire Edge Housing Summit?
Who was there? I, I didn't.
I didn't attend.
Yeah, maybe that Fred was there, so we will table that for an April update. Um, moving on to reports, the ADU program. Um, construct received two applications by the time of the deadline. I think there were four inquiries and one application, at least one application after the deadline. Of the two applications they received. Um. At the time, by the time of the deadline, uh, only one was appropriate to consider. I'm sharing their summary. Can you? I can't see what you can see. Um.
Wow.
I don't know what that is.
So are you able to see a page that says, that starts with residency and the score is five?
We see a cornfield.
Yes.
That's across from my house, but that's not what I'm trying to share.
Oh, that's right.
Let me try again. I'm just the PDF. Let's try that. How's that?
Yes, that works.
Um, so this is their summary. This is of the how they scored that application. Um. And they would, they are asking us to adopt their recommendation to fund this application. And I'm just realizing I have the number in my head, but I should verify for you before I say it out loud. Um, does it? Do you all need to keep looking at this or?
Can, well, is there something to the top we can't see?
Uh, the top is just the score.
Okay.
So I was scrolling down so you could see the it has all of the required components.
What about, what is the resident need is gonna be, this is gonna provide eighteen percent of their household income?
No, so if I went back to the evaluation rubric.
Yeah.
He defined, um, the resident landlord financial need as the extent to which the landlord applicant demonstrates financial limitations in meeting the cost of living in Great Barrington. Then an income restricted ADU would help alleviate and, um, a score of two is housing costs are less than thirty percent of the applicant's household income and there is little financial need.
Now, I missed some things obviously. What is, why is there a one per location?
Uh, I can. Location, um. The location, the tenant will need to have their own transportation to be able to access grocery or food or main street.
Okay. Um.
And it's a family of four and nine hundred feet, nine hundred square feet?
Uh, the family of four, I believe refers to, because the tenant isn't, the tenant isn't identified until the time that they make the rental available. So I believe family of a four actually refers to the size of the household.
Okay.
Landlord.
That actually makes more sense.
It does make more sense. Um. I'm gonna stop.
It's a question mark, so.
Yeah, cuz they don't have that information about the tenant's need.
Alright, okay.
Um. So I believe, and I just wanna confirm this before we vote to release money and my, I have a split screen going on and I have to find the right thing, um.
They had plans and everything and cost out and all that?
All of that was required for the application to be considered, and so I suspect that the application that wasn't considered. Um. I think was missing components.
Yep.
Um.
So do we, we know, so we, we know the amount?
I'm, I have, in my head, it is one hundred thousand and it's because I saw it somewhere, but now, now that I was about to ask that we make a motion, I was like, I should really make sure I look at that email today. Um. So I apologize.
You say a hundred is the max, though.
A hundred is the max, yeah.
That would still leave us with fifty.
Yeah.
Do we know where this is, by the way?
The, no, we don't. I mean, it's in Great Barrington. That's what we know.
Right. That's, that's all we need to know. Yeah, e- everything's abstracted from us. Uh, through construct. They're not, they're not near the center of town.
Yeah, that we know because of.
We didn't get a good score on
on location.
Uh, I really apologize. I there's this ongoing conversation about the deadlines, but. So I have an email from Jane that says we are recommending that this request be awarded.
Hmm.
Um. I'm not finding the email where I saw the actual amount, so I wanna propose that we move forward with, um, accepting their recommendation and I mean, it is, be, I guess I would ask based on what we know, is there any reason that we would not accept their recommendation on the funding as well? Like, we wanna know what it is. But if it was different, it, it can't be over a hundred thousand. If it was under a hundred thousand, like, it wouldn't change our vote on or I'm asking, change your vote on accepting their recommendation.
Remind, remind me the, um, the other, that's like straight up, uh, uh, application for any you, that's like the normal process. We, we awarded one hundred thousand, is that right?
Can you ask that again a different way?
Um, the I'm blanking on the name, um, the former owners of fuel. Uh, the, um.
Oh, yeah, that was a different process. That was the developers' R P that we're gonna talk about later. And that was a hundred fifty thousand, yes, for a two-bedroom apartment.
Your two-bedroom apartment. Um. But how many apartments?
It was two apartments.
Two apartments, so like like fifty, so in essence, fifty thousand, it's up to five, two, two units.
Yeah. I don't. So I'm just putting up what we what we, what we designed this program for, and I don't think we can deviate from this.
That's right. Uh, we can't deviate.
Now, as I recall, they do work and then we pay them, they do work, then we pay them. Sort of like a construction loan.
Um, I think it's fifty percent upfront and then cost reimbursement.
Right.
Yeah, just first.
So we could just look to give them the, uh, the money up to a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, they're not, they're not gonna get more than that. Right. So, um, no, I'm, I'm just, I'm just looking at our, our precedent. And man, this is so they recommended that.
They recommend that we accept. They recommend that we accept that application.
Hmm.
Um, I, I can, I can and will get the amount. But I'm wondering if we can, if we can vote to accept the recommendation without the amount to keep things moving forward or not, and that's completely at our discretion as a board.
Yeah, I'm.
To move forward.
I'm, I'm inclined to, to say yes, I just, I just wanna explore it a little bit.
Yes, yeah.
Um, I'm not, I'm not trying to not do it. I'm just trying to understand what we, what did we agree to, um, in the first place, so. Um, whole number of applications want to return.
Yeah, this is, this is what we agreed to, the, um.
Didn't we have some language about, about two, or did we, did we throw that out?
We, we, yeah, we didn't, we discussed that, but this is where we landed. We landed that there would be no, um, that the
No, if no.
Actions will be determined during the evaluation process.
I mean, this, this seems fine. It's just, so it's March, and did we did we say, so we, so we set it up as like a rolling, rolling admission evaluation?
Oh, that's it.
As a, uh, first as a first, first come, first served.
We set it up as a three-month application window.
Oh, oh, so this, this is the time when we choose. Yeah.
Well, we said to construct, we're hiring you to make recommendations to us and construct is saying to us, great, we have a recommendation. We need you to adopt it so this person can move forward in the process.
Okay.
Um, and the process to Chris, because the, because Town Hall will administer the actual firstment, you know.
So I yeah, so I would most, I would motion that we agree to pay the money that was submitted.
One second.
Okay, roll call vote, Peter.
Oh. Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Garfield.
I would discussion.
Um.
Okay, we sort of
Great, pause the vote and go back to discussion. Garfield, what's, what would you like to discuss?
I would like to discuss because I've seen, I feel like I'm a little lost. We have not actually procured someone to actually build these homes yet. We're just going to processes of driving, and setting up a project.
This is a process where, um, the we will give a grant to the applicant and they, they're gonna build the the ADU on their property.
Yep.
Um, now to submit the proposal, they, they really would have had to contact, talk to a contractor to have an accurate budget. And Fred and I, I think, heard from at least one contractor who reached out to say this is a great program. Somebody talked to me, somebody talked to me about their application.
Okay, so, so there's someone to build it, but not someone actually who has the property or is saying, yes, I would like, uh, in other words, someone who's going to have it on their property. No one has said, yes, I wanted to do this yet.
No, that, yeah, that's who the applicant is. The applicant is somebody who has said, I wanna build an ADU on my property.
Oh.
And I've applied to this program. What we don't know is who they will rent it to, cuz they won't open up the, they won't, they'll have to build it first before they find a tenant.
Yeah. We, we do know it's gonna be a hundred percent AMI.
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct.
And where is it again? Uh, again, I really
We all have an ass. But we know it's in Great Barrington and that it is, um, it, it's a part of Great Barrington that would require trans, that would require the tenant to have their own transportation.
That's why it's the one, okay.
Good question. Alright, um. Gonna start that roll call vote again. Um, Peter.
I.
Joe.
Hi.
Garfield.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
Ananda. I. Alright.
I just wanna say, this is good because it, well, this is good because this is additive. So like, we, we've done, we've done, we, we have used a hundred thousand dollars in the past to ensure that an existing rental stays affordable. This was an additive, so, you know, and
Mental, yeah.
So, I mean, it's, it's what needs to be done.
Um, can I ask an awkward question, which, you know, I usually do, um. Not knowing who the applicant is and not knowing where the house is, does that create a problem for us if we ended up just voting to pay our best friend or, or relative of funds? I mean, are, are we, uh, i- is that fine? I'm just asking, cuz, you know, I'm a lawyer, right?
Yeah, so.
That's sort of why we hired construct.
Yeah.
We
I mean, I guess I'm asking, are we exercising our fiduciary obligation? Cuz among other things, we have an issue about conflicts of interest where you have to recuse yourself if you're and, and we're blind here, which is fine, but is being blind, is that, are we immunized therefore from a claim that we just gave my nephew money?
Yeah. Um. So. Uh, my thinking, well, one, this has been reviewed by the town's council.
Okay. Well, no, I have a great deal of respect for him, as you know.
Um. So. At least, you know, like, the process we followed in terms of legal review thinks this works. I would say in addition to that, um. That if, you know, I think that if we, like, if my brother applied, I would be obligated to let everybody know. Because I, I assume that, um, all the, the conflict rules apply and that he can't apply until, unless I've been off the trust for a year. Um, and.
Uh, Ananda, you, you've answered my question. This has been reviewed by town council. Town council has advised us that a blind process where we do not know who the applicant is and we are approving funding for a blind applicant satisfies conflict of interest laws under the state of Massachusetts or Commonwealth. If, as long as town council tells us that, I feel we're fine. So I'm gonna, I'm, I'm, just had to ask.
I can't. Have a question, like, I even have a question whether or not we needed this vote today, given the way we've structured the program. But I figured, let's vote and keep it moving rather than open that can of worms and take another month if we do have to vote, cuz I think that one way of reading how it's structured, it, it's just determined at the assessment phase and the assessment phase happens by the subcontractor. Um. But this vote will then make it really clear for Chris that the funds have been, uh, the funds have been encumbered.
Okay, now, again, I'm kinda with what Peter said, I don't know, it sure seems kind of wh- what if this person, we, we don't even know where this place is, and we don't even know who it is. What if they're just way out of line, way out of Whack那儿, and on the edge of Mill River or something? I know they have to have the transportation.
No, they must be in Great Barrington. They are in Great Barrington.
In the, almost in Mill River, but in Great Barrington or something like that. I don't know, this feels funny not to know where it is and who it is. I don't know.
Um.
Like trusting someone and you don't really know how, why you're trusting them, cuz you don't know enough about.
I can reiterate the reasons we stated for using a contract-based administrator for this process, and the first is to better protect that privacy of applicants, to ensure the resources needed for the application and selection process. And to provide a greater level of expertise in housing and community-based loan programs. So that's why, that's why we subcontracted and that's why we selected Constructed as the subcontractor.
Yeah, I think it's probably best for us not to know who it is or where it is.
And it's very, it's very, very normal for government entities to, um, find a subcontractor for this kind of process, like the, um, opioid settlement funds that go to, that are at the state level, not the municipal ones. The, the state released an RFP request and the proposal, it was requesting proposals to set up a granting process for those funds in the Commonwealth. Um. So it's not unusual. Um, but that does bring up, while we're talking about the ADU, so we'll be under the budgeted amount, which means we'll have funds to put back into our budget. And, um. You know, I, it means what, it's talking about what we wanna do next in our process, cuz the idea was to do the pilot to not only get some more housing, but to see how it goes and learn from it. Um, so I'm just wondering our, if we wanna put on a future agenda, a debrief and invite Jane to come and share their perspective from what they saw, cuz the idea is that we will use this to assess if this is the kind of thing we wanna keep doing, like do we wanna allocate more funds next year to it and or wait a year or?
Very interesting question. I'd like to see what's happening in a year, for sure. Yeah, before we.
So do we wanna make an agenda item in April and see if, uh, Jane can join us?
Yeah, sure.
Do you do a debrief?
Sure. I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Um. Moving on to the financial update, there really, it besides the conversation we just had, there isn't new information from December. Um. And we uh, so. That's
So nothing new, we can move on to something else?
Yeah, it's just sharing it. Is there any questions? I will be doing, at, you know, at the end of this month, I'll be doing the third quarter report and sending that to CPC. Um.
Would, would you remind me how much we're anticipating of, to get from CPC funding?
Hmm, yes. I will, um. I'm just scrolling through the packet, cuz I think it's in the packet. I put it out of my mind. It's all, it's almost four hundred thousand, I think.
Yeah.
Um.
Nice, trophy Jane.
Yeah, so I think, uh, I think it's like three seventy-five.
That number rings a bell for me, so.
Yeah, um.
That, that's fine. I don't need an exact number.
And I just told you I don't have brain fog, but this is the second thing where I'm like, I just saw this number. Yeah, I think it's three seventy-five, um.
Can I ask a question since, again, I feel a little bit behind, maybe even more behind. So when we were speaking earlier, we were talking about, um, so do we want to go ahead and and, um, have something in play? Uh, as you were suggesting for next year or for the next possible, um, applicant, if you will, are we gonna wait and see what happens with this first?
Um. I, what I'm proposing is that in April we invite Jane and we and with Jane, who has the internal perspective at Construct, maybe Chris will be able to join. But that's a good time for us to ask ourselves, what have we learned? What have, do we like this? Or if we did this again, would we wanna do it differently? Do we wanna do it again? So I would, that's what I'm proposing, is that we have a conversation in April that is where we decide what, what direction we wanna go from here. Um, including that, you know, there's funds that we will not have used, but we, but, but that we budgeted for. Um.
Now, Ananda, when you said, do we wanna do this or go this direction? Are you saying, I don't know, it just seems odd that we would only do this once. Which is kinda, I can't say a defeat to purpose, but I mean, we're kinda gung ho on it and we think it's kinda needed.
The only way I could get us to do it, Garfield, was if I was like, let's just do it once and see how it goes. Um, but I think
I like it.
Like, just looking at this application, for example, I'm thrilled that it scored high in so many places. But like, the, one of the reasons I wanted to think about this was like, could we use this process to help support families that are really struggling to make ends meet as homeowners? And this one application would suggest no, this, which is so it, that might lead us to say, okay, that's not an important criteria. Or it might, we might say, no, it's still an important criteria and it means that when there are applications that do have that need, it's gonna score higher and we'll be prioritizing people who need it, but it doesn't close the opportunity for other folks and it's a, a legitimate avenue of adding housing to the market.
Okay, is anyone aware that, anyone meaning the general public, aware of our process here and, and that we are going to probably do one? In other words, it's just been out there, so hey, we are doing this Great Barrington. You wanna get in on it, if you will, and I'm sure from asking the correct questions, but those are my thoughts. Um.
Uh, Bill, do you wanna speak to the publicity?
Yeah, we, we did advertise it and, uh, both the shopper's guide and all of the community bulletin boards and all that sort of thing, so. Word got out there, yes.
Okay.
I got several people asking me questions about it that I was able to answer, but. I don't, I don't know if they applied or not, so.
Yeah, several people, meaning just two or three perhaps?
Yes.
Um, just, this is the CPC awards for, that the voters will vote on in Maine. I've for the Affordable Housing Trust.
Three seventy-five, yeah.
Three seventy-five, yeah.
Joseph.
So, um. About the, the ADU program, um. Is it, the, can, the person getting awarded, are they going to be unblinded so we can like? Um, you know, look at, look at it going forward?
Um, it will, it, Chris will, Chris will have to make a contract with them. And so. Chris will know, but, and, I mean, Freedom of Information Request would know at that point. Um, it's my view that that is a staff matter to oversee and not ours. Unless there's some, there's a problem that rises to our level.
Maybe we can, we can certainly ask him to ask them if they, we can talk to them, because I'm saying in terms of, um. You know, advertisement.
Yeah.
Ideally, ideally, you'd want like a Berkshire Eagle.
Yeah, like.
And may, maybe you wait till it's a success.
Yeah.
But it, you know, like in the success situation, you want to, you want to trumpet your success, you know.
No, I meant more that like, I don't think we should be getting monthly updates on the progress or. That that, um, is the staff level matter unless. Unless Chris says to us that he's, he would like it to look different.
Yeah, but we have to know if it worked or not, and we have to know if it's a failure.
Yeah, yeah, and it would be. Ask Chris for updates.
In, in some of the down payment assistance loans. There were people who really would rather not have their names publicized.
Yeah.
And we honored that. There's some.
Current process does not. Necessarily protect that, you know? Um, going back to the agenda, moving. This is a little bit of a light agenda, but let's work with it. Um, there's a suggestion that we have a budget discussion, I. I think it is, personally, I think it is premature, but if anybody would like to discuss the budget for FY twenty-six, please do so.
I have a point.
Yeah.
Um, and I was going to mention this in trustee speak, but maybe I can combine the two. I met with Chris on Friday to discuss the residential exemption. Uh, he had some questions about the program and he, um. Um, one of the questions is. How, how, how much of the town, how much should the town? Let me start again, uh, the town is foregoing revenue in order to have this program by exempting property. Um, and I don't need to tell Garfield or anyone else. On, on this call that it, it's a not a great time to be asking for additional funds. Um, didn't raise it with Chris, but I wanted to ask whether, uh, so. Uh, if you recall, the December twenty memorandum that went to the select board. Asked for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be exempted, and I, I, um, my sense was that. Uh, was an uncomfortable amount, um, to, as a recommendation to the board. Uh, I'm wondering if in the future, we, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, would like to dedicate some of the funds that. We obtained, um, to put towards that program.
I don't know if we can.
Yeah. Okay, what, um, so we get funds from the CPC. And we're asking the town, we're asking the town to forego revenues in order to create affordable housing units. The town, I, I, I don't believe that Chris was obviously not speaking for the select board, he was just going through and trying to understand it. Well, it would, it would be like the town paying itself taxes.
Well, I, I mean.
These are different pockets, right?
Yeah, but the issue is all CPC funds are restricted.
Yes, the CPC funds are restricted towards, among other things. Creating affordable housing. We have a program where we want to create a for, new affordable housing units. And to do that, we are asking the town to forego certain property tax revenue. The town is in a difficult position with respect to how much it has to budget for that program. We have three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars next year. Would we consider putting aside up to, you know, X, let's just say X amount for purposes of this discussion? Would we consider that we have these funds? That have been dedicated for a purpose of affordable housing that could be utilized for this program? That we have all voted for and believe would be beneficial.
I think that, so my, I, I would, I would need to know more from people who. Um, understand the CPC's restrictions in detail. So I'd answer this on two levels. One, I think that the CPC, the CPA funds. Like, they have to go to the creating of the housing, they, they couldn't go. To pay for the tax subsidy.
But, but the tax is creating the, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the tax is actually paying for the housing. You only get the, those dollars if you have created a new residential unit.
Right, but like, that, like, the funds might have to go to the homeowner. Or the unit owner, for example, so that's one question that I have. The other thing I would just say is I think that if we did that. And it was not a part, any part of what we discussed in our proposal. We would be setting back, I mean, we've, we've started a process. That's moving the town in the direction of allocating all of the CPA. Housing, affordable housing funds to the Affordable Housing Trust to manage. It's been work to get here, and the tenure of the CPC was. This is like, this is a trial, we want to keep moving in this direction, but let's see how this goes.
I, I can, I can. I can take another answer, I just wanted to ask if this was, I, it sounds like this is a bad idea and I often have them, and that's fine. It is a bad idea because we're just using town money, town tax money to pay town taxes. They're not really losing any money to the town. They're just not, I mean, these are for new units. So we're not subtracting anything from the income the town is getting, we're just not adding more income to it. Eventually, those, they do start paying taxes after fifteen years or whatever. But the town isn't, they're not subtracting any money from the income that the town gets from taxes. They're just not adding that new income that they would have gotten. For a new, a new project, a new building. They're just not going to get that new income, they're not losing any money that they would ordinarily. I mean, they're not deducting it, they're just not getting new.
Well, but Bill, let me ask this. If I was a landlord and I was, um. I had four units and I rented them all at. Market rates over one hundred percent AMI and. I decided to take one of those units and make it affordable and get this, this tax exemption on that unit. Wouldn't that mean that in that case, the town was losing taxes I'd previously paid on that unit?
Yep. You're right.
I mean, I think that there's, I think it's a narrow window where that's a business decision somebody would make. So I'm not overly worried about it, but I, I can see a scenario where there are some. And especially as, um, I think that there are, I think there are rentals that qualify right now. As affordable housing that, um, you know, three years ago didn't. Because AMI has changed.
Right, but they are not going to get this exemption.
Well, they would if. You're saying because technically they're affordable, but they're just.
If they're currently rented to somebody, it has to be a new unit that wasn't currently rented on an affordable basis. Which, which is, we refer to as the Richard Stanley problem.
Because you, Richard Stanley.
He currently rents.
Qualify any of his current rentals that would meet the standard with the current.
A, a unit couldn't have been correct under the program.
Right.
I don't know, when you mentioned something about monies and maybe, um, this being a bad time. It probably isn't a good time for, with the budget season and things, how they're going and. This will have to go past town meeting, and I don't know, I don't know. I'm there, and it's not pretty.
With my Affordable Housing Trust co-chair hat on, I would like to say. That, um, I, I think it is important that this goes before voters, I think that, um. I think that. We are in a complex budget system that we don't have any easy problems solving for right now. And that the answer can't be taking things off the table so that voters can't vote on them. When it's about making Great Barrington livable for people, often for people who've grown up here or lived here a long time.
Well, I'm not suggesting taking it off the table or anything like that, I just don't know if we can ask for more monies at this time. And I don't know, I don't know why I have this funny feeling about. The voters in our town, and I don't know how readily they're going to accept this. I really don't.
The taxes, the. Oh, the affordable housing tax exemption.
Right.
Yeah.
It's ugly, it's getting ugly.
I don't, the vote will go, but I think it's important that this is. These are the issues voters are weighing in on.
Oh, absolutely, I agree with you one hundred percent, I'm just saying I don't. Know how it's going to fare and be certain, I don't think we could ask for any more money at this point.
Um, Joe, were you going to add something?
Uh, no, I, I dropped off.
Um, this is. This is the budget that was submitted with our CPC proposal and. So, these are the programs we've discussed with them. And we get to the point where we're making our FY twenty-six budget, which I think is best to do after the town meeting vote. This is what we'll be thinking about.
Okay.
And, and Peter, like, you can't, like, the conversation you just brought up, like, that can be part of it. We s. And I don't think it's a bad thing, I don't think it's a bad thing to talk something like that through and even end up with different opinions about it. So the other thing that, I guess I could have just kept that shared, the other thing that was in the packet, um. Is the timeline from the CPC application. So. What I wanted to look at here is. Um, this next item that on the old business is revising and updating the process for a future RFP. Um, and the idea here is that. As we move towards a budgeting process. We're also preparing how we would accept proposals for funds from developers. And that includes nonprofits, I'm sorry, proposal, yeah, proposals for funds, so, um. We had in October twenty twenty-three released an RFP, that's the one that the Corelletis. And, um, the CDC responded to, and we granted funds to the Corelleti Project. Um, have folks had an opportunity to go back and review that RFP?
Yes, and I, I had a, something I wanted to bring up, um. Uh, three different people have now spoken to me about. Donating their home when they. Are deceased to. An affordable housing trust or something. And. It would be nice if we, I don't know if an RFP is quite appropriate. Um. There's some other people who have talked to me about, uh. Land that they would like to make available to a housing trust, but they want money for it, of course, so. I don't know how broad we can go with an RFP. But I think we could go a lot broader than just going to developers. Because I think there's a lot of other things out there, you know, not necessarily. Housing developers.
Property acquisitions.
Yes.
And we. I mean, to date, when we haven't done any property acquisitions via request for proposals, right?
That's right. It's a little weird to try and do with an RFP, but. Yeah, there's people who would just basically like to leave it to affordable housing in some way in their will.
Yeah, which is really like, it's planned giving, and so that would be. I don't see, I don't think we'd need a request for proposals for that, I think that we could. Um.
Well, for the program.
Well, I mean, like, you could basically put the information needed on the website.
Yeah.
Um, we'd have to do a little research, but like, you could have basically a, a simple. Um, area of the website where there's like a button and it clicks, you get a form and it allows somebody to, to submit. Information to the trust that they'd like to donate their house. Um, and then it would be. I mean, it would really be a plan, the same kind of planned giving process that nonprofits who do that kind of. Long-term fund, uh, long-term planned giving work donors. Um, so we probably, there are probably people in the community who are familiar with that. Process from a nonprofit standpoint who could advise us.
Okay, I, I think it's.
Well, that would be something, I tell you, I wouldn't mind, or that's a thought that's come to my mind when I'm gone. To do something like that, it would sure be nice to make this an affordable home, when the guy across the street sells his house for one point two million.
Yeah.
That would be cute.
Yeah, and, you know, that's, that's their, that's what they want it to be, they want to leave their home. To some organization that will ensure that it's going to be affordable.
Yeah.
No, that idea, at least some monies or something, yes, my family doesn't want my home, that's something I'm really thinking of doing myself.
Yes, I mean, you know, they have no children, whatever, they're ready to.
It's me.
Yeah, great, make that commitment. Anyhow, maybe that's not an RFP thing, but.
Well, like, let's move that to next steps.
Yeah.
Um. Is that something that you want to research, Bill, or I could, you know, I could put you in touch with. Some folks I know in the nonprofit world on the development side who probably know.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah.
Okay.
Um, oh, oh, I, I need to drop off, uh, kids stuff.
Okay.
Right, so, bye-bye.
Bye. Um. Which I think leaves room for the RFP to remain focused on. This is the, this is the mechanism for developers or nonprofits to ask for funding. For projects they have underway or want to have underway. Um, I know that, like, my big issue with the RFP was that the assessment. Like, that we built a much more robust assessment for the. Like that we built a much more robust assessment for the ADU pilot.
Right.
And I, the question I have is like, could we just take the work that we put into the ADU pilot? And. Adapt it for how we um assess. A request to to a request from a developer or nonprofit. I mean, there's things about it that would not. Make us make sense, like the resident landlord assessment part, but.
But yes, I think having something like that would be really worthwhile.
And the other thing I've thought about is like stabilizing the. Um, budget information, so it requests for. It asks for a fairly extensive amount of financial information, which I like, but I would have wondered if we should develop. A format that it, like a form that gets filled out so that each application, we're we're looking. At the same information the same way. Is this something that we just, that we wanna just like jump in and work on now with the remaining time we have?
Is this the last item on the agenda?
It is the last item on the agenda. I mean, I would li- I think I'd really like us to move forward with. Having an outline for the planning process for the Rising Ball Field, but I think that um. That's held up while Fred is trying to get the technical support from the state.
Do we have any idea how long that's gonna take? Is that underway or?
I mean, I know that he's been in touch with them, but. I don't have a timeline and I think that would be. That would be a good thing to get an update on.
Yeah. Because we wanna do community outreach before we go much further, right?
Yeah. I mean, that's my thought is that. We're and maybe, you know, maybe you all think differently, but um. And we we lost Garfield, but let me add him back. That. We like, we don't have the capacity right now to move to develop that anyway. The, it makes sense to take it, take as much time as we need to to have a solid. Planning process that engages the community. Because, you know, I imagining that where we'll end is we'll be releasing an RFP for what we wanna have happen on that. And what we wanna have happen will ideally reflect with the community. That what their input has been.
Right.
And then, you know, when we're, when we release an RFP, it will be. It's, you know, the respondents will likely be the same. Organizations that. Are already on the ground and.
Yeah, not necessarily.
Not necessarily, but.
I mean, I think Habitat is pretty full up right now and.
Constructed, I think, is as well. CDC, I don't, they they don't have an executive director, right?
Right.
But. All right, let's.
Two or three other developers who are not local. Who've had convers- I've had conversations with who'd be interested.
And. Yeah, I just, I mean, I don't know that right now, and Peter, you might have perspective on this, but I don't know that right now with the costs of construction. A developer can. Develop a site as affordable housing. You know, like, that's why, that's why it makes sense to partner with nonprofits because. Part of what they bring to the table is um they're often fundraising, you know.
Right, the way to make a small fortune right now in affordable housing is to start with a large one.
No one makes a, no one makes a small fortune even in affordable housing.
It's not possible. It it it's not, it's not possible. You can't, you can't do stick ground up construction.
Right.
All right, so do we wanna look at the rubric or do we wanna look at the RFP and like what's? But here's three options. We could start working on the rubric and use the next half hour to like. Uh start adapt adapting it. We could go through the RFP with kind of the similar idea of flagging what. We want to have changed and start talking that through, or we could um. We could assign that as a task to happen between meetings and end the meeting early. It's really just depending on how we wanna work as a group. What do you all wanna do?
I would vote for taking a look at the rubric and seeing how it translates into. An RFP.
So I'll just review the, the way we structured the RFP was that it would be a rolling deadline. Applications would be due, I think, like the first of the month so that they could be reviewed by the. Trust at our following meeting and then it would just, it would be rolling until the funding allocated ran out. And it covered. With this RFP, the trust seeks proposals for the following developable land to acquire for new affordable housing. Renovation and redevelopment projects that will produce new or um preserve existing affordable housing.
So we were looking for land.
Apparently, we included that um.
So I keep that in there.
Yeah, um. It required a cover letter, a narrative, description and timeline. Um, the response shall include a description of the relevant expertise of the proposer. Uh include an organizational chart. Relevant projects. Five relevant references. And fully describe the budget, the de- development budget, including a mountain source of all proposed funds and ten-year operating pro forma. That reflects the typical income or. Sales or rents and expenses, including but not limited to debt service, cost, capital or operating services. So that's the kind of rough outline and then I'm gonna share my screen. And this is the rubric that we had for the ADU.
Read out.
How's that?
Oh, there we are.
I was just saving it so we could edit it. So there'd be no residency requirement.
Right.
But there would be a requirement that the property is in Great Barrington.
Yes, that would have to be.
I asked you a question, why is it eligible to vote in Great Barrington? Wouldn't it be re- just a resident of Great Barrington? Because some people lose their uh voter eligibility for uh for. Certain reasons, or or they may not be a US citizen, but they could be a resident.
I don't remember why. Is the real.
You ran it by town council probably.
Yes, well, it all got ran by town, run by town council um.
But usually, it's just I'm surprised eligibility to vote isn't usually a requirement for government program.
It's resident. But I think that um. You know, I I I think that's a good thing for us to review if we reopen this program. And it might be changing it from, it's, doesn't matter if. It doesn't matter if they're eligible to vote in terms of citizenship or anything like that, that it. We're just, it was just the residency similarities that they were trying to articulate.
But we're not gonna use residency for this anyhow.
Right, but if we were to open the ADU again.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, project viability, that seems. That seems like a relevant criteria, but the details would prob- we'd probably rank differently for this level of scale project. Or maybe not. I mean, like strongest should have all of the elements, because I do remember when we were reviewing the previous. Proposals. When I was reviewing the budgets, I did, I at least on one of them, it did not have all of the required elements of the budget.
Yeah, I I think the only thing I would change is right at the very beginning. Savings, other loan, sweat equity.
Yeah, that would be.
That's about. You know, I could use your savings, because it's. Project viability was, you know, do they have? Can they get a loan to do the project, I guess?
Well, thinking about like what we're asking for on the pro forma. It's, it's not just can they get a loan, but is it like, is it a viable business model?
Yeah, have they done this kind of thing before and all of that too? That's better.
And I think it asked for ten years out.
Okay, yes.
Living space proposed.
Yeah, we should take out ADU.
Units. Are. So these. These um square footage details wouldn't apply.
No.
But would we want to be evaluating the square footage just with a different metric?
Probably. I mean, I think.
Like this probably could stay this way.
Yeah.
But then as we, we like, how would we define? The strongest.
Well, it could be more than nine hundred square feet, but.
Right, cuz they, it's not an ADU, it's not.
Could we use a price per square foot?
Well, it's about the quality of the living space, not the price in this.
That's true, yeah. Well, maybe you just take out the space allowable and deal with full kitchen washer dryer, da 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 da.
Well, here's my question, though, like. Wouldn't we want to evaluate a proposal that was? A hundred and fifty for units that were a hundred and fifty square feet differently than units that were for twelve hundred square feet?
Not necessarily.
But do we think the rest? Applies? Is it, and I'm wondering if the windows are like um at least one. You know who was helpful in this section was Jeremy. Cause he brought the planning board knowledge.
Should we call him?
No, I am thinking like this one, I'm thinking like this would be good to come back to with Jeremy.
Yeah.
Let's spell his name right. There you go.
You never know if I'm spelling something, if it's gonna be. Remotely, right? Location, I feel like that holds up pretty well.
Yeah.
Uh, how do we judge cellphone?
I think that just comes right out that hole.
That's the same question that the uh lawyer had. Peter.
How do we judge, the question with Bill, how do we judge cellphone coverage?
I mean, that, so the answer in a lot of ways, like the best answer is. Our local knowledge of where cellphones work and don't work. And then if you really wanna get technical, you send somebody out to the site to verify, but. On the eighty.
Doesn't that seem like an odd, doesn't that seem like an odd requirement? I don't know, I mean, I I I don't need to make, debate the point with you, but.
Well, if you, like, given that Great Barrington has areas that don't have cellphone coverage and that so many people. Only have cellphones, and especially when you're talking about. People who are on a budget. Like to have to pay for a landline and a cellphone is a lot, and so. It's not. Um, you know, it's not that we didn't think it was the only criteria to consider, but we thought it's, it's actually an important thing. To consider in scoring.
They shouldn't have to pay, couldn't they just pay for one or the other? No one says you have to have two. Forms of uh communication as far as the cellphone and landline. I happen to have them both, but I don't know where that would be a requirement. For one or the other. A landline would be perfectly, me, I like having my landline. It's my actually. By the line, I prefer getting my information on the best or the most, so I don't know.
I think that the argument that was made that got this here, which wasn't my argument. But the argument that was made is that is, we really need to be considering cell coverage as you, as a utility. And um. How it got here. Now, like, for example, I live. I live in this tiny triangle in Great Barrington. It's like. It's like three houses that doesn't have cell coverage. Um, and I don't have a landline, but I have to pay a lot of money for internet service. So that I can make calls over the internet.
So you can have a landline, no one would stop you from, or whomever.
Line, I'd have to pay another sixty, seventy dollars a month.
Well, I'm saying you don't have to have both, I guess. I don't know why you have to have phone, cellphone and a landline. Why can't you just have a landline?
Go ahead, Bill.
Especially if you don't get cellphone coverage where you are in certain.
It's twenty-two ninety-nine a month, and then uh. Just so you know. A land. A landline is twenty-two ninety-nine, I have to have it for my alarm system.
I mean, I, I don't, I accepted the argument on this one and my, my argument would be why would we have a different.
Isn't the more critical question if there, the area is internet capable?
And that is, that is a good point, Peter.
That's where I was getting at.
Yeah.
You said it such that all the others weren't, but this, even a blind squirrel finds a.
No, I said it like that because earlier you had, you had been self-deprecating and saying that often you're making a bad point. No, you are not, you're making a good point, and why didn't we think of that before?
There you go, I'll take it.
Um, the number four, do we just take that out, or do we think there's something? There's a, some parallel. Like, I guess the question would be like, would we favor a nonprofit application applicant over a for-profit?
I would say no. I would say whoever makes the best presentation gives us the best eats the best.
Are there people ready for me to take that out?
Yes.
Great. Cost effectiveness, I think that is still relevant.
Absolutely.
And then this impact, this was a very specific discussion to the ADUs. But this first part could still be applicable, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Just put a period.
Then the that holds. And over on this, it's multi-room.
Yeah, just take out in the landlord slash applicant's residential unit. And otherwise it's fine, I think.
Okay.
I wonder if a landlord's gonna be one of those terms that we end up, uh, not using in the future. Sorry, that was just a random thought.
Why are we taking that out again, please?
Well.
Uh, cause it was in, it was only applicable to the ADU pilot, there isn't isn't a similar.
Okay, thank you.
You think, um, it might be outdated if you're referring to.
Well, we don't use master bedroom any longer, just thinking of people in terms of being a lord is, is also seems inequitable. But um, I don't think this is within the realm of the AHTF to, um, so you know, I'm not emotion if that's what you're wondering.
I think we have, um, studio, one bedroom, two bedrooms, multi-bedroom.
So studio, one bedroom. Two bedroom.
Technically, two bedroom is multi-bedroom.
Oh, yeah.
How about three, three plus bedroom?
Three or more.
Like this?
Yeah.
I hope Eileen is laughing a little bit at this discussion.
Um, so that, so something that the RFP mentions that we don't capture on this is previous experience with similar projects, would we want to add that?
Yeah.
Um, so Bill's a yes, let me argue that just, just for fun.
Yeah.
One of the things we want to do, of course, is, is promote industry. And um, I guess on the one hand, you'd argue someone who has done this successfully before is a better bet. If you're gonna put dogs on a, on a, on a horse, dollars on a horse, you want to know that horse has won before. But don't we want to encourage people um, that to, to go in an area and, and, and so is it fair to wait against someone that hasn't done it before? Discussion.
Well.
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to see if someone had, who has done it before. We just adding more complications, I think, if we don't, I, I, that's my preference anyway.
And, and that's a reasonable position.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think there are builders who have several different houses going on at once that could probably pull this off. And maybe haven't done a, a development of fifteen units or something before, but they have certainly built more than fifteen units of housing. Just not all in one spot before.
I don't know.
You know, have they done it before? Well, kind of.
Kind of doesn't, doesn't thrill me though, Billy, I'd be honest.
Don't forget what Dolly said, money should be spread around so the young can grow.
Yes.
I don't know.
This is this is what I will contribute to this discussion, um. The Coletti project, that was their first project.
Yeah.
And it was a great project.
Right, and they don't have to do fifteen units.
For those.
Right, well, that's not fifteen units.
Right.
Um.
I think building fifteen different houses and fifteen house in one spot really is different. There is, I, I, so I wouldn't, I couldn't say, yeah, he's built fifteen houses, he's never built them in one spot, that's a whole different animal.
Right, but again, we might just be looking for somebody who's gonna build a three-family house.
Hmm.
And probably has built a three-family house before. Or at least.
Well, maybe we can put some caveat in there, if, if it's gonna be over a set amount, then we would like someone who's had experience um, doing this before. If you're gonna build three houses, that's fine, if you're gonna build fifteen in one spot, I'd sure like to know that you've done it, myself would like to know you've done it before.
So I'm thinking about a couple of things. One, I'm thinking that we saw, we had two applications at the same time, one from an experienced developer, the CDC, and one from the Coletis. And we awarded the Coletis and we did not award the CDC. Um. And it, and I don't, I feel good about our, our overall process, how we engaged and we were fairly thorough.
Yes.
Um, Peter, I will go to you next. The other thing I'm thinking about is, um, the question might not be have you done this thing before when we're talking about experience? The question might be what experience are you bringing that will make this project a success? And that might be what we need to evaluate.
I think you're saying the same thing, just saying it differently. That's what it sounded like to me. You're saying the same thing, just in a different.
No, so I'm saying, um, to me, there's a difference between I want to know this project you're proposing, you're gonna build, uh, three duplexes. I want to know if you've built three duplexes before, that's, that's what I'm looking to find out versus I want, I want you to tell me what in your background, what experiences have you had that are gonna make you good at building three duplexes as affordable housing? Um, Peter.
Um, rather than saying experience, how would you consider capabilities consistent with the scope of the project?
That doesn't sound too bad.
Yeah.
I. Or that, in fact.
That's not so bad, um, I just didn't care for the way it stated it or not, because I just think, okay, yep, that's possible and someone can tell you that, and when it gets down to the nitty-gritty, it doesn't happen. And um, I, I don't know, I, I, yeah, I, I would need something on paper instead of just telling me. I need, it's a real concrete information, seeing where it was perhaps, how it was done, I'd want all that information.
Yeah, we need something that we can evaluate.
Yeah.
Um, so I just dropped it down at the bottom here, these were the five areas in the original RFP, um. I think we are like the, we, we already include financial feasibility. In the ADU, we didn't have to access affordability, assess affordability because we'd, we'd said it all had to be at a certain level, so I think you'd need to add that one. Probably very close to the top, I mean, the order doesn't matter. But.
And should we consider something like, um, maybe a duplex where one unit is sold at market rate and another unit is rented affordably or something like that, or two units rented affordably?
Like what they're doing in Egremont?
Yeah. I mean, can we make it clear that we're open to something like that, or are we open to something like that?
I mean, so I would approach that as you know, somebody could put in that proposal and we'd be, it I guess what, oh, hang on, I'm stopped, but so you're saying in, like what, in what Egremont's doing, the homeowner of the duplex is going to be income eligible and the tenant is gonna be income eligible?
Yes.
So wouldn't that just we, it wouldn't, it would, we'd just be assessing the total number of units? But we right now don't have like a way to assess like, do we value somebody becoming a property owner on something that is income restricted in perpetuity over a rental?
Are we really, what are we looking, I guess, what are we looking for as a question? Do we want more homeownership, or do we want more? Want to try and create more rentals, or do we care?
Um. I mean, I had just assumed, and this may be a bad assumption. I had just assumed that the best way for us to pursue increasing homeownership is through projects like the um, Habitat project and the down payment assistance. So I, I had just been thinking that's how we're doing that part of it, and that might be a bad assumption.
That was very to me.
Well.
I think in this version, Bill.
Yeah.
The, the we have to purchase the property for it to become affordable in perpetuity, correct?
Hmm, no, there can be a deed restriction put on the property.
So a developer could say, I have this property and I wanna you know, or somebody could be like, I just want to do something good for my community, I have this extra property and I wanna I want to have it become affordable housing, but I want to control the development of it, I don't want to turn the development over to the Affordable Housing Trust and, but I do want to use your money. Sure.
Yeah, if, if it's.
Could it be them, I just don't think this is gonna be a strong vehicle for homeownership?
Yeah.
But I'm not I don't have a problem with it if somebody is like, I know how to drive this vehicle to homeownership.
Okay.
All right, well, let's, let's mull that over and come back. So it's um, five to eight, I want to wrap up so we can offer citizen speak and um, media speak time, but what I'm we didn't really talk about the purchase price and if that belongs on this. We have this other issues to return to, and then we need to block out internet access, block out affordability, come back to three with Jeremy and come back to this. Do we want to keep working on this in the meeting, or do we want to, um, is there a subcommittee that wants to work on this and bring it back?
It seems like we made some progress this evening.
We did. We could come in the meeting.
Yeah, I would, I would bring it back to the meeting, I think it's probably not that much left to change, and if everybody's here, we can then vote on it, so.
It's seven fifty-five, folks.
Yeah.
That, I have a life somewhat, not a lot, but a little bit.
Okay, um. Trustee speak time?
I, I said my piece earlier.
Yeah, nothing here.
My dog Finley says that it is almost eight and we should stop. Um, media speak time?
Well, I trust you didn't, I didn't get a chance, I, I'm, I'm very glad that we're doing this, I'm very glad I'm able to get caught up and I like the way we're going, I like our direction, I like what we're trying to do.
Great, thank you. Eileen, do you have anything? Hearing nothing, sit, oh, hi, Eileen.
Hi. I said no.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Eileen.
I hate it.
Eileen.
Hi, Bill.
All right. Are unanimous consent?
When's the next meeting?
Next meeting?
April fifteenth.
Eileen, all right.
According to the agenda.
Eileen has set the next meeting for, uh, April.
Well, it's, it's on the agenda.
On the agenda, yes.
It is indeed April fifteenth, tax day, so. All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Bye.
Bye. Right.